of the whole meeting for Tuesday, January 4th, 2024. We just finished closed session, item number two, and are moving on to committee business. Before we jump in, I just have a comment from our city administrator, Mr. Fry.
Thank you, Mayor. Due to the lateness of the previous meeting, one of the items we have on for the committee of the whole tonight is a 30-minute discussion level for the aldermen to talk to us about their budget thoughts and concerns. Because of the fact that we're so far over, we'd like to recommend moving that to June 18th and doing it at that time so we can get ourselves back on schedule tonight. And so if everybody's good with that, the department heads can go. Aldermen have to stay, department heads can go.
And please accept our apology for the department heads that don't have anything on the agenda this evening. Thank you for coming tonight.
So Kevin Freeberg can stay.
Good. So on to committee business, discussion on Doc Hounds' request for a firework permit at the Wisconsin Brewing Park. So how do we start that with you?
Um, or Jason, one of us, it doesn't matter.
Jason, do you want to bring it forward, please?
Good evening. A week or so ago, the city received an application for a request for fireworks at the Lake Country Doc Hounds Stadium. They're asking for a one-time display for the calendar year of 2024, for the season. This came before us in 2023. Council never actually took action on it. There was a couple of issues that were brought up. We heard from a adjacent property owner of Ace Precision that they had a rubber membrane roof and that there was concerns about that starting on fire from some of the ash falling. There was also an oxygen tank there, and there was concerns about potential safety issues with that. Plus, we did express to the council that we heard from the Department of Transportation that there was concerns that they raised, even though they're not an approving authority, about distractions that fireworks could cause to the drivers. We did draft a temporary use permit that you had in your packets back on June of 27th of '23. We talked about the number of dates they were asking for back then was three. The event duration would be no more than 10 minutes in duration. The type of fireworks were regulated, this is just to bring back some of the stuff that we talked about last time. The types of fireworks regulated a mortar size not to exceed two inches. And I'm not a fireworks expert, but Matt is here. He could tell you what a two-inch firework is. It's more of a smaller scale. It's not the real tall boomers that go off. Weather conditions would be monitored. That was a condition of the temporary use permit and that the city police and/or Western Lakes Fire District had the right to cancel fireworks. The neighbors would be notified, site cleanup, complaints, insurance, and event changes. So that permit was never acted on, but it was part of the conditional use permit for the Doc Hounds. It said, "No fireworks are allowed unless a temporary use permit is issued by the common council." So here we are tonight. They're asking again. They did submit some information, and they said they would like to come back and request your permission for one event in the calendar year of this year in 2024. And they would like to have a one-minute preview show to show you where it would be located. And they would like to set up a date tonight to see if you guys are interested in that. We put it on for discussion because if you're not interested in this at all and you just have no interest in pursuing that, then just let us know. And we'll, you know, they're here, they'll hear that loud and clear, and they won't apply. But with that, I'm here to answer any questions. And I know Matt would be available from the representative of the fireworks company to tell you what changes he's been, they've given the matter some thought and what changes they've implemented to hopefully get your permission to have one event in this year.
Alderman Altman cloth.
All right, so I just have three. I'll try to make it somewhat quick. So if I'm looking at this correctly, the application for them to do fireworks is $75, correct?
The temporary use permit is $75.
Kind of, and I don't.
Yeah, they've to do a.
The permit for fireworks is 100 in addition to the 75.
So $175, okay. So, and I remember this a little bit from last year. I remember talking to Chief Bowen, like, how many man-hours would go in for you guys in order to make sure that they're, you know, kind of doing things right and all the boxes are checked? Because I remember that being a concern last year, thinking that we're going to put in X number of man-hours with Western Lakes for $175, and that just, we're really upside down on that.
But I think that's your standard permitting. And what we do is when Diane gets a fireworks permit, she sends it to us along with the police department, and we all sign off on it. So we review it. They submit a site plan of the map. We look at it, we review, are they compliant with NFPA? We might have an hour into everyone, but that's just what we do. I think what we also talked about last year was, okay, do we have to be on-site for them? You know, when we have the fireworks here in the city, we've got a unit staged over at the church. We've got a unit staged over here. That, I know, was part of the discussion as well. But our review, as long as the applicant is submitting a good thorough plan and telling us what size mortars they're launching, how many, where, it's a pretty easy review. It's when we get the applicants that don't submit a thorough plan with a map and showing where the setbacks are, et cetera.
Okay. And then my second thing is, and this was the thing that was probably like the most disappointing last year, was, and I don't remember who it was, if it was someone from, is anyone from the Doc Hounds here today? No? Okay. So I don't remember if it was you or someone from the Doc Hounds last year had got up and, you know, had kind of given us, you know, like your spiel on, you know, what you wanted to do. And one of the things that was said to us was, "We've talked to all the business owners around, and everybody's okay with it." When we had the guy from Precision Ace sitting in the back that day, that was like, you know, and he got up and he's like, "I'm not okay with this." So I know in the documents it says that things have been moved. I personally would feel more comfortable if we could hear from that gentleman from Precision Ace again, just to see where he's at on it. And then I guess my final thing again is just going back to the DOT and what their report was.
Yeah, please come up and please identify yourself for the record.
Well, I'm Matt, the owner of the fireworks display company. So the biggest thing that I want to do before coming back here was speak to Dave. So last year, there was a miscommunication. I was under the impression that this information was getting shared a lot more than it was. So I did get to speak with Dave, and he was actually the one that proposed an additional test shoot. Because again, his concerns, you know, I explained to him, you know, what the setback laws are and things like that. And I just explained to him that we're, you know, hoping to move it further over so that we're going to have more than double what is actually required. But the thing is, when it comes to the, you know, fire code and things like that, there's not really a set guideline for an oxygen tank. So I'm just treating it as it was a gasoline tank, you know? And it basically is double what it would be for a crowd setback. So with moving to this proposed new location, we have almost double the double that we need from that distance. And I think that what Dave was saying is that, you know, he, I guess, you know, as well as the council members that, you know, I apologize that we didn't invite you guys to the shoot either. I think he just wants to see it because obviously seeing is believing. So I spoke with him, and I said that, you know, I'll keep him informed with everything that we do, all the permitting process. And he said that, you know, as long as you keep me informed on what a test shoot would be, I'd be happy to join. So that's why we're coming here to propose a new test shoot date and then just make sure that it's, you know, convenient for everyone who wants to attend and make sure that Dave can also be there as well.
Alderman Rosak.
Out of curiosity, Matt, what's the closest you've ever shot these kind of fireworks to an interstate? I mean, is this the closest you've probably ever shot right next to the interstate?
Probably close to that, but I mean fireworks in general, no.
Yeah, what about, what about hospitals? Do you shoot fireworks typically?
Yeah, we've shot, you know, right by hospitals.
I, surprisingly, I'm not 100% opposed to a single, one single firework show at some point throughout the year. I think a test shoot would be cool. I think it's a good idea. My concern, this isn't really for you. This is for the rest of the council or whoever's watching is, you know, mission creep on this, that this goes from one firework show. See, this was great, everybody loved it. And then we're, you know, being asked to approve four or five the year after. I personally think that request beyond the one would not be good neighbors to the hospital. Aurora is a Level 2 trauma center. They have helicopters that land and deliver people, you know? And someone's trying to get dropped off in a Flight for Life helicopter, and you've got fireworks going off at 10 o'clock at night. There are folks that live around there in residence. You've got a lot of apartment folks that live, you know, a couple hundred yards away. So I'm not completely opposed to the one, but I'm just, I'm concerned with how things went last time that this becomes four, five, six, you know, in the future, and that's my biggest concern, so. And I'm not trying to take business away from you, you know?
So, I mean, the main thing with this is, I mean, so I'm in fireworks in several different, besides this display, I also sell fireworks. But I'm also like a community member. I live in Summit.
Can you hook me up with any, some cool shells?
Good, yeah.
Okay.
Well, the thing is, the things that we'd be using are all. So I work for TNT Fireworks, which is a pretty big brand nationwide. And then I started this display company because I've been doing displays for six, seven years.
Nice.
But the main thing I went to the Doc Hounds is because like, we go to Doc Hounds games. You know, my family goes, my kids love it. All of our neighbors go there, and we're in the community. So, you know, when speaking with Sonny and them, like, I told them, like, you know, we're not trying to, like you said, come back for more shows. If the city's only comfortable with one year, that's completely fine with us. You know, we're just looking for, let's try it out once, see how it goes. You know, maybe, maybe everyone loves it, and it's a great, you know, great draw. We get a big crowd for it, nothing happens, great. You know, we get a few neighbors that are unhappy with it, that's fine too. I was also going to mention that part of, you know, we have donated. I saw he was wearing a 5-0 shirt. We did donate a show to the 5-0s that's going to be probably mid-July. So I'd be happy to invite people to come and visit that, just to kind of see what we're going to do. And, you know, with going with the fireworks, you know, I know that you guys put on a show for the Fourth of July. So just, you know, the types that we're going to use are different than those. Those are all 1.3. Those are Class B fireworks. Those typically shoot anywhere from, you know, 400 to 600 feet in the air. The bursts are much bigger. So by limiting to like two-inch-sized shells, those are things that you can buy that any one of you guys can go up to Sullivan and buy yourselves. So it's going to be all those same type of fireworks that, you know, any consumer, it's called 1.4G, which is consumer fireworks that anyone can get. And part of the test shoot will also show not only the breaking effects, but a few other effects that we have. And a lot of them, you know, just for the concerns of things, you know, I would say well over half of them are going to be sparking only devices that do not break. Because what separates us from, you know, your average Fourth of July company is, you know, we sync it to music. So we're using all different effects, not just the ones that explode. So we're using all sorts of stuff. And I could show, like I said, I'll provide a few of those on display at the test shoot as well as, you know, if you wanted to come out when we actually do a shoot for the Doc Hounds that we donated for their bourbon event this year, that it's going to be in mid-July.
So your request, your request from the council is to do a test shoot. Test shoot goes well, then to do one show this calendar year. Is that correct?
Correct.
Other questions from council members? Alderman Ellis.
When would this, when would this show be?
So we left it TBD. It'd probably be end of July, August, one of the last weekends that the Doc Hounds have on the schedule. But just due to, you know, timing on when we can get the test shoot going, when we can bring it back to council, when we can do all that, we figure we probably couldn't get it any earlier than that. But again, you know, myself and the Doc Hounds want everyone to know that we're 100% open to what you guys feel is best. So if there's certain, you know, if there's another event going on and, you know, in the area or something, like, you know, obviously, or like HarleyFest, or if they're having an event that same night, that's not, you know, comfortable doing it then, we're open to what the council feels is best.
I have a, I have a bit of a question. I'm sorry, I wasn't, wasn't. I was going to ask this question anyway. HarleyFest, do they not have some sort of fireworks at the end of their?
I don't think so.
I don't know, I.
No.
Do not.
You mean here, our Harley dealership here, no?
That's correct. Okay, great, so.
Chief says no.
He didn't believe me, he believes chief.
Okay, okay, great.
Chief, chief.
Spiegelberg.
You've got three chiefs here.
I wasn't, I wasn't.
So Chief Bowen said because they would be submitting a very good plan, they wouldn't need a presence when they're actually shooting them off. How about when you're doing the test shoot? Would we be looking for some type of presence from the fire department in there?
We're open to whoever would want to come. They were present last year, but they're more than welcome to come this year. But as far as if you're looking for a, if we need like a safety team or something there, between myself and my crew and the Doc Hounds, we have plenty enough people that, you know, can monitor the situation. We have extinguishers and things on hand, especially for something, you know, it's only going to be a few things that would, it shouldn't require any staff or.
And so the discussion only, but are we providing direction to say, yes, let's go ahead with the test shoot?
We're going to do a straw poll to see if there's support for it because we don't want to have to waste money on a test shoot and those things if we're fully against it. Alderman Ellis, you wanted to finish.
Yeah, my concern is, number one, the neighbors, okay? All of a sudden, you're sleeping and somebody hits a home run, oh, or something along those lines. The hospital, Flight for Life, when they're coming in, they're coming in hot. And maybe you're having some sort of fireworks going off at that time. How high will these fireworks be before they start to?
I mean, it's probably, we're looking at like about 200 feet at most.
Okay.
So if you, if, I don't know if you guys remember, the presentation that the tree line is right about there. So it's right about, just over the tree line. I obviously can't speak to helicopters, what their, you know, altitude is when they'd be coming in there. But as far as, you know, what I think we sort of lacked in last year was communicating on things, which is why we also, you know, if we could move forward with it, you know, we'd want that, which is why we said late July, August, so we have plenty of time to broadcast that to not only the neighbors, not just, you know, them putting something on their Facebook page or something like that, like an actual letter that we'd send to all the surrounding areas. I mean, we have, in similar areas in the state, when we do permitting for events like these, one example is, you know, people with horse barns. You know, just as a courtesy, the city usually asks us to, or they'll let us know if there's anyone nearby. And if there is any neighbors nearby, we make sure to provide, you know, a letter that gets directly dropped off at their house, so we know that they've been notified.
And do, I just excuse my ignorance here. Do we have a berm or something before the highway itself? Because my other concern is strays. You know, all of a sudden, something goes off, and instead of going up, it goes out. And that does happen.
So we, well, things like that do happen, but the way that we set everything up is everything's braced to avoid all that type of stuff happening. So if anything, so like, for instance, if you're thinking of a shell or something, that's encased not only in the tube, but it's in a bracketed frame that it would shoot out of. So if anything, it just blows up the rack, is what it does. Same thing for like, they're called cakes, which are multi-aerials. Essentially, you know, most of the time, we have them taped together, also provided in like a wooden bracket frame. So anything that would come out, the site is contained in where it's shot out of.
Thank you. Alderman Maroni.
My question is for the weather conditions on the night of, if we do the test shoot and then the night of the actual fireworks, who makes that call that evening? If it's, it's whether, it's not necessarily one way or the other. It's a little bit windy, the wind swirls around in different directions. Maybe sometimes it doesn't affect, you know, Ace Precision, depending on which way the wind blows.
Yeah.
Or the other businesses, you know, we've got a lot, we've got Harley over there. We've got a lot of things going on. There's a hotel. They brought up the hospitals, you know, to be good neighbors. I mean, I'm just, who's making that decision the night of?
So we'd obviously, I mean, it's obviously police and fire for one. Then, you know, it's up to the city on that. But also, it's, you know, I have insurance myself, and it's, you know, it's difficult for regular people to get it. That's why only companies like myself have it. So like, we wouldn't do anything to jeopardize, you know, that type of situation. So we're pretty level-headed when it comes to, we've had to cancel things, you know, especially when it comes to like a wedding, you know? They're not going to get married another day. So if something happens that day of, it's unfortunate. But we have no problem having to pull the plug if we have to. Everything that, the distances and the fallout that I would provide to show like the site map and everything, that's all rated for, you know, 15-mile power winds. So we watch that constantly. We typically go by, you know, it's kind of like a 1-3-5 rule, where five hours before, three hours before, one hour before, we're checking the wind conditions just to make sure. And then the other thing that could affect us is, you know, dry conditions. Last year, we, it was pretty dry. So if any of that stuff comes up, that would be something that, you know, we could pull, pull the plug on beforehand. And we'll make sure to communicate with, you know, Chief and Fire day of. I would assume that for us getting approved, one of the conditions would be some sort of onsite inspection the day of. So we would, you know, be open to all that stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I would feel comfortable if we had like our police and fire there to help make that call, you know, just for our residents' sake.
Yep. Yeah, 100%.
So I'd like to ask the council, with the request of one test fire, with no guarantee that they're going to have one per year, but they'd have to come back to council, is there anyone that's opposed that absolutely does not want this to move forward? If so, please raise your hand. With no hands being raised, I think you have, have the blessing to do the test fire, but realize there's no guarantee. And we'll kind of take it from there. Yeah, Alderman, Altman cloth.
And I was kind of on the fence if I was going to mention this. I think before we make the final vote, I would like to see you reach out to either Summit Aurora or the Flight for Life just to see how putting a firework display right there would impact.
Oftentimes, they'll have a flight pattern too.
Yeah.
Based on different wind conditions, and that will also help.
Yeah, we'd do that for sure.
Good, a good idea.
And then also with the test shoot date, we were going to throw out Monday the 17th or backup date Monday the 24th. But I also want to run this by Dave and make sure he has enough time to coordinate to be there. So I don't know.
You communicate directly with Jason, and then we'll inform the council.
Okay, and then by that time, I should have answers from Aurora and the Flight for Life team.
Great. Alderman Rosak.
My only last comment, I mean, I think letting them do the test shoot, work with the neighbors in Aurora is fine. I don't know if I'm going to vote yes ultimately to this thing or not. I'm, we got a good packet of stuff, and I'm really disappointed that the actual people who want to shoot the fireworks for their business aren't here to talk to us and answer a few of these questions. I think it's, I mean, I got an email a couple of weeks ago saying this is what we were thinking about doing, and I gave my thoughts and told them, you know, see you at the meeting. So I mean, I don't know. It just, it's kind of disappointing. You know, maybe it was an emergency, but.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm not as concerned about that because we're just looking for direction for the test shoot, and this is the guy that we.
I get it.
We need to answer the questions for, so.
They will for sure be here for any council meeting or anything like that.
This is a council meeting.
We just didn't know that, we weren't 100% sure. There was several talks of when this was going to be discussed.
Well, I think, I think you should be prepared that we as a council, and if I'm misspeaking by saying we as a council, want to make sure that we're not just giving you carte blanche in the years ahead to have 20, 30, 40 fireworks displays. So I think that has come across loud and clear, and I just want to make sure that you understand that, and we look forward to seeing your test.
Yeah, Tom and Sonny do as well, just so you know. They, they said if that's a big hang-up, they, we have no issue with.
Great.
You won't have any problems.
Thank you for coming. Item committee business 4B has been rescheduled for the 18th on our next council meeting. Like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Rosak.
Second, Altman cloth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourning the committee of the whole meeting. We will take a five-minute break, and then we will start the common council meeting in five minutes. The City of Oconomowoc Common Council Meeting for Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
If we'd all please rise. Chief Fister, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis. Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Maroney.
Here.
Alderman Douglas.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Present.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Here.
entertain a motion for approval of minutes for May 21st, 2024.
So moved, Rosick.
Second, Altman-Cloth.
Any questions or comments, Alderman Spiegelberg?
Yeah, I had one correction. Page, on page five regarding the motion to approve the High Water Paddleboard kiosk. It says that the motion was made by Rosick, it was actually made by me.
I apologize.
No, no, that's fine, but.
We'll correct that.
So corrected, and Rosick and Altman-Cloth, are you still good with your motions?
Yes, with that correction.
Yes.
That's a good catch.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, moving on. Any comments or suggestions from citizens? Do we have any blue cards out there? I don't see anything, so we're going to move on. We have no consent agenda items for this evening, so we're going to move on to committee reports. Protection Welfare Consider Act on Resolution 24-R3198 granting renewal of the 2024-2025 alcohol beverage license. Ms. Condon.
Thank you, Mayor. The license or the resolution before you is for all licenses that have submitted their applications, renewal applications by the deadline, and they meet all Chapter 12 licensing requirements as well as all state statutes. So I'm recommending, and it went to protection and welfare as well, and they're recommending approval, adoption of the resolution.
Rosick, so moved.
Second, Ellis.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And to Consider Act on Resolution 24-R3199 granting a new 2024-2025 Class A intoxicated liquor fermented malt beverage license to the Sausage House.
So the Sausage House has been operating with a fermented malt beverage license this past year. They now want to add wine to sell at their location. So they are looking for a full Class A intoxicating liquor fermented malt beverage license. The indication of that license is that they could also sell any other types of hard liquor. They have indicated they're looking to sell wine. There are no quotas on Class A licenses, and therefore both protection and welfare, and I are recommending approval of the license. I will add, they've had no issues selling the beer, no complaints in the past year.
So it's a retail?
It's, yes, it's retail, and I did ask the owner to be present. I'm not, I have not, I had not heard from him, so I guess I went on the assumption he would be here.
Questions or comments? Like to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Without objection, I'd like to bring forward item 8B, the 2023 Audit Results Report and Presentation. Any objections from council? We'll move that forward. I was going to bring it a little earlier, and I forgot, I am sorry. Ms. Sullivan-Murray.
We're not going to get to this one?
Just respectful, so you don't have to stay here all night.
Just can I make one little note, though? I mean, if we're going to do this for him, I think going forward, then we just do it for everybody, because I do know of people that you have turned down in the past that have come before us for certain things. And it, it needs to be an all or nothing. I mean, I'm okay with it today, but just keep that in mind in the future.
No, and it's the judge's prerogative to make that decision. Not the judge, the mayor, the mayor's decision to make that prerogative.
No slip of tongue there, eh?
Sorry about that. No, I hear you, but I still feel I have that responsibility to make those judgments.
I've seen local businesses get turned down.
So I'm taking the second to turn this on just because we video this so that the people at home can see the, can see the screen. So tonight, we have the results from the 2023 financial audit, and Paul Franz from Baker Tilly, who is our principal auditor, is here to just kind of go through that presentation with you. The presentation is in your packet as well, but I just want to have the graphs up on the screen too for the people at home. Thanks.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Happy to be with you tonight and share another positive year with the audit cycle. We have issued an opinion on the 1231-23 audit. We've issued an unmodified opinion, also known as a clean bill of health. What that tells you in the financial statement document is that all necessary disclosures have been included in there. All necessary accounting principles have been adopted by management and applied consistently year over year, and that there are no material misstatements within the financial statement. So when you hire an external auditor, that's the outcome that you're looking to hear. It's the highest level assurance that I can give you. Okay? In the, Laurie is the mouse. In your packet, as Laurie mentioned, there are a couple attachments. One being the presentation that's up on the screen that summarizes the two documents. One again being the annual comprehensive financial report, otherwise known as the financial statements. And then the other being a audit that comes, or a letter that comes from us that describes the audit process. If there were any findings or recommendations during the audit process, it would be noted in there. And then a talk about the future and some required communications that we need to have with you as a governing body. I'll use the handout to summarize those reports, but if you do have direct questions specific to any pages, happy to dive into it in more depth. Our letter does lay out the objectives of the audit process, responsibilities for any, for each side of the party. We do, we don't look at every transaction. There is a risk-based approach for your audit that we look at the significant transaction cycles, identify areas of risks, and then apply audit procedures around that. And then there's a layer of materiality that ties into what we determine what we should and shouldn't test during the course of our audit work. Our letter also includes if there are any issues during the audit process, what the procedures around that would be. Again, as I alluded to at the beginning, the audit process was very smooth. Management was well-prepared. We didn't have any audit adjustments that we identified during the course of the audit process. And what that should tell you is that the financial information that you presented throughout the year is reliable since your auditors aren't coming in at year end to make significant corrections. That's not a normal situation that we run into in the audit space. That's much more common, we're finding journal entries throughout the audit process. And so again, highlights the strong team that you have in place to provide you the data that you need to make the decisions that you do. They also make our life very easy in the audit process. There was one change during the audit process to our original plan. Due to the spending of the ARPA dollars in 2023, the city was required to consider the need for a single audit. Anytime you receive and spend more than $750,000 of federal dollars in a calendar year, you're required to have a federal and state single audit. There is an exception to that rule that we were able to use for the city, which required then just an exam of that one specific ARPA program within the standards. And so we did complete a single audit exam over the ARPA transactions, and again, did not find any compliance concerns and provided a clean opinion over that, that work. That, as you can understand, is a one-time project for us, unless you in the future get some large grants, again, that have spending that would take you over that threshold. Continuing on, I do share some financial tables that we have worked with management to pull together to summarize the 2023 financial year. Collectively, we'll start in the general fund and really have provided the five different buckets that make up the fund balance of your, your general fund. First being non-spendable. It's just under $900,000. That, that non-spendable category is really in transactions that have not run through the income statement, but cash is left as of year, year-end, or cash is not available to be used in per se a receivable that's just not actively expected to be collected within a certain amount of time. About $965,000 of restricted fund balance. This would be fund balance that's earmarked for a specific purpose and held by restricted means, meaning that you can't use it for anything other than the intended purpose. You have just over $500,000 of committed fund balance. Again, that would be things that the council has committed for, for use in the future. About 1.5 million of assigned fund balance is where things are earmarked, which is a little bit more fluid in how it can or could be used, but really more just earmarked in the moment. And unassigned of just under 9.7 million dollars, which would ultimately be the true reserves of the, the general fund, things that are not earmarked for a specific purpose. To give you a little table, so significant amount of your 13.5 million sits in that unassigned category. We move to the next slide. This gives you a picture of the structure of, of your reserves in relation to where one would like to see them. You remain in a very strong financial position. We look for our communities that we work with to be somewhere between 10 to 25% in, in our calculation of unrestricted fund balance divided by your expenditures. You're about 70%, so again, very strong financial position. With that context, I have many communities that are below 10% and many that are significantly higher than where you're at. So as long as you are working with a plan and understand that there is money there, there is no concern to be over that 25%. It's just a different conversation if you are on the other side of the 10, 10%. So no concern with what we're seeing there. Continuing on, the next slide shows a picture of the last five years related to your GO debt, your general obligation debt. The city had just over 41 million at year end. The utilities had just under 7 million. You have a capacity to borrow up to 5% of your equalized value. So your capacity is at $187 million. So significant room there. Again, at 26% your, your debt limit, no concerns in how you're leveraged. So nothing else there to add of significance. This next slide gives you a picture of your TIF funds, TIF 4 through 8. The ins and outs, and we got increment being generated on 4, 5, and 6. In the middle of this slide, we do highlight the fund balance in each of these TIFs. The one, there's one fund, TIF 6, running a deficit of 300, just over $310,000. Again, the plan is that increment will continue to generate and cover that in the future. As far as TIF 7, that has the largest fund balance, just under $6.4 million. And again, most of that is the spend down yet of, of bond proceeds that exist. We went into the last two slides specifically around the electric and water utility. The PSC does authorize rate of return, and so this is just providing some context around compliance with that and where you sit with your rates. And looking this over the last five years, nothing of concern or significance to note here. I think management does a good job of pulling all the right parties and the levers when it is necessary to be considering rate, rate changes. But that there is for, they're provided to you for context of review. And then also just a graph sharing some of the same information over time where you, where you lie completely, you know, and compliant to your rate of return. So with that, I'll pause. Let you ask any questions of me, but again, just appreciate the opportunity to work with the city and like to highlight and thank John and Laurie and Hannah for all their help throughout the audit process.
Thank you. Alderman Ellis.
So on page seven, I noticed that we were 26% debt. If we look at 19, we were at 9%. Why is there such a swing?
TIFs.
That's going to, that's going to be a Laurie question.
That is. I can speculate, but.
So the, the main reason for the increased debt is annually, we borrowed money for street construction. But the biggest reason is the TIF districts. So of that 41 million that says city, about 19 million of that is TIF districts. So, you know, we've got just about 21 million that we are paying the debt service on, with, using tax levy. Everything else of that 48 million, the debt service is paid either through the utilities or through the TIF districts. So I would like to, in the future, just kind of lay that out for you so you can see, you know, really how much of that is city debt as in our streets or our, you know, the police department or the community center or whatever, compared to what's getting paid for by other sources.
Thank you. Alderman, Rosick.
Yeah, I have one question, and I don't think it's for Paul, but maybe Laurie, could be both. On page 19 of the actual comprehensive financial report, Laurie, we got this nice pie chart of governmental activity, functional expenses. This guy, I can just hold it up. This one? Yeah. It's not a question necessarily about that chart, but I, is there a way for us to get a chart or find charts from other similarly sized communities for us to just compare? I just, for curiosity's sake, get budget cycle.
Absolutely. I mean, the Department of Revenue has these pie charts for every municipal.
Okay, I mean, I'd like us to collect for the budget cycle this year, you know, three or four of other comparable-sized communities.
Sure.
Just so, you know, as, like, for instance, you know, we had a significant increase of, you know, from 28% to, from 26% to 34% for police services, for instance. You know, and not that that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I'm just, I'm curious what a similarly sized community spends on public safety, on public works, on general governance.
And don't forget, the public safety includes the fire department as well.
Well, some of them, right.
So the increases, you know, we did take an increase because of the referendum and then at the additional police officers that we hired.
Right, not just police, but just generally. I would just be curious, I think it'd be an interesting thing to look at as we go through our budget and talk about priorities, you know, what other communities, you know, are some other communities at 40% on those numbers and we're at 34?
Sure.
Just for discussion.
Just kind of trying to benchmark off other groups.
Yeah, just to see what other people are doing.
That might be also a nice thing to do for the quarterly meetings for the finance committee.
Okay.
And then also sharing it with the whole council.
Gotcha.
Alderman Ellis.
Thank you.
So we have 9.6 million in fund balance?
Yeah, and I have that pulled up right here because I knew you were going to ask me. That's, I mean, that it, the way that we separate fund balance compared to the way the auditors separate fund balance, when we do this, that 9.6 million, we actually move 5, 5.6 of that into the committed area because that's the amount council said we're going to keep as our 25% fund balance. So your true unassigned fund balance that you could use for something else is 4.1 million. And then one other thing to keep in mind is that 1.4 million of that 4 million, we are using to cover the negative fund balances for the impact fees and for that one TIF district that's. Anything that has a negative fund balance, we have to cover it with another governmental fund because it can't be negative. We have to have the funds. So, you know, of that unassigned, about 1.4 million of that we are using because we use parking impact fees before we've completely collected them all or because a TIF district needs a advance to get started, those kind of things.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
As appointed comptroller, I just want to take this opportunity to thank Paul as always, and I know you always say that our audit is a dream audit for you guys. So I always appreciate hearing that, and kudos to Laurie and John and Hannah for all their hard work and for the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for 2022 and looking to hope to get that in 2023. Then I'll get up on my soapbox like I, like I do, I think, every year and just remind the department heads, especially in those departments, that take in cash, which would be like the police department, city hall, community center, that, you know, we're not a big enough community to have completely perfect internal controls. So there are other controls that are in place, but they're not perfect. So I just want to remind those department heads that we want to be mindful of. So I just want to remind those department heads that we want to be mindful of those internal controls every year that we look at this.
Alderman Ellis.
So in the worst case scenario, for whatever reasons, we're not receiving funds or anything along those lines, how are we looking? As a city.
Yes, I was gonna say, how many months' reserves do we have?
I would say four, if you're using the four point.
And I mean, that 25% reserve, say, you know, we had another thing that was like COVID and for some reason we're really not getting reserve, revenues at all, that's what that 25% reserve's for. It's for something really bad happens.
What should, what should be our, okay, we're there.
We're there.
We are there.
Okay.
There is no concern, as long as you're evaluating how you might use that or why you're holding on to it, that would be the, the concern. And by having the policy that you have in place that already takes the 25% out of the decision process for you, it tells you that you're, you're sitting in a strong, strong position. Something came up, you still have reserves to, to be, or you're even tapping into that.
So here's, here's a question, maybe a lot of people, this is my last one, I'm done. The money which we receive, that's all from taxpayers?
No. So the majority, a, a large percentage, I don't have the percentage, give me that chart again with the revenues, that same chart we were just looking at. So if you look at page 18 of your audit report, it will show you, and we look at this during budget time every year or two, where our revenues come from. So of our total budget, 54% of the revenue that comes in is from property taxes, but we have other sources of funds as well. Like last year, one of the reasons why, you know, we add to fund balance is because of the number of permits that came in last year was quite a bit higher than we thought we would have, or the amount of interest that we earned last year was quite a bit more than we had originally budgeted. We had vacancies during the year when employees are gone, but we budgeted for them to work the entire year. So for those reasons, we end up adding dollars to fund balance. But you do have a good plan, and we look at our five-year plan, our capital plan, and currently the council has a plan to spend $400,000 to $600,000 of that unassigned fund balance to help out with capital projects, to help keep the levy down, or to help keep us from having to borrow additional funds. So we are planning for fund balance, you know, and you're, I think, you know, you're making good use of it while still allowing yourself room for those projects that come in that are important to you. You do have, you know, we are, we are in a financial position to be able to do some of those projects as they come forward because of the way that you manage fund balance.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much for coming, and if there's anything you see in the future, please let our team know.
Certainly.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
I'd like to move back to item 7C. It's the first reading. Consider Act on Ordinance 24-01069 to opt out of the extended closing hours for licensed alcohol premise during the Republican National Convention, July 15th to the 18th, 2024. This is the first reading. Ms. Conan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Or do you want to?
Well, or Mark?
No, thank you. So, no, this is something that, actually, the town of Oconomowoc had looked at earlier, and I think it sparked it to be on our radar, but Alderman, Alderman Cloth had reached out and asked if the city was doing anything with this and reviewing the ordinance. So Act 73, which was enacted in December of 2023, allows for licensed premises to have extended sales hours during the Republican National Convention, which is July 15th through the 18th. It's a Monday through Thursday. And also as part of that, they put wording in that allows municipalities to pass an ordinance to opt out of having those extended hours. We didn't think there was going to be a big impact either way within the city, but I wanted to bring the item forward to the common council so that you know that you have options so that you can discuss and decide how you want to move forward. One of the things was Alderman Shellpepper had asked a question in the committee about, can we exclude anybody? At that time, I didn't have an answer, but in, in looking at the act, and if I can find that, it talks about, we could establish a process to designate and so designate any license, holding, any licensee holding a license issued by Southeast Wisconsin municipality to which one would apply, otherwise apply as ineligible or disqualified for the extended hours. So they do have wording in there that we could put together a process if we wanted to eliminate any particular premise from this.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Mark Dunn.
So, yeah, I, I mean, and just in closing, it, it's here because we, as a city, we have an option. And I wanted the common council, we're not bringing any recommendation either way. As we mentioned in, in committee, we, the city clerk has talked to the hotels in the area. None of them were looking at taking advantage of any of the extended hours. We kind of felt that we were a little farther away from Milwaukee for that type of thing. So, you know, and discussing, you know, could there be a couple establishments within the city that might want to take advantage, but overall, probably not many, if any, so. So it's council's discussion, council's decision.
No recommendations from the city. Alderman Altman Cloth and then Alderman Shellpepper.
I would prefer we do not extend the hours going into this. I was hoping that the city would not participate in that. Now knowing from Diane that the hotels aren't even really at capacity in the one hotel, it looks like they're going to be housing security more than like participants. So it just kind of makes it even more so. I just think we're just that far enough west that it's just, it's, you know, what's the old saying, like, nothing good happens after 10 o'clock or midnight, or I don't know, as I get older, it's, you know, nine o'clock, 8:30, you know? So.
Near age, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, 8:30, anything after 8:30 is no good. So, yeah, that's just my two cents.
Alderman Shellpepper.
I was just wondering if chief had an opinion on this?
You mean, Mr. Neutral?
I mean, do you think it'll add a significant element of?
No, I'm, really, I talked to the city administrator about that. I don't think it's gonna do anything either way, really, for us. I think if some establishments take advantage of it, I don't think it's gonna be many. But we're still gonna be the same manpower and everything else that can handle it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
So how would businesses, let's say CoCos, be made aware of this, other than maybe it's in the Oconomowoc enterprise tomorrow? But if businesses like that come forward to us requesting that, would we then take that into consideration?
Well, they already have the ability to go to 4 o'clock. What you're looking at voting on is whether you want to change that to the regular hour of 2:00 AM. So right now, it's already on the state statute.
Right now, we're, we're trying to opt out today. Go back to 2:00 AM or 2:30 on the weekends.
That was my question. I didn't understand what we were voting on.
If we do, if we do nothing, it just stays where it's at, and you can, they can stay open until 4:00 AM. If you decide to approve this resolution, then we're opting out of that option. And it's just an option. I don't have a strong feeling either way.
But we have, we still have time to think about this.
I would suggest not waiving the second reading on this, or the first reading on this and going to a second reading on it. And at least that gives the opportunity for like a CoCos or someone to come to us and say, we're really looking forward to staying open later.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm in support of the extended hours. I think it's just another economic development opportunity. I don't think we're that far away from Milwaukee. You know, I've communicated with people who are engaging with the RNC, who think this is a place that there will be some activity and engagement. So I think anything to, you know, encourage people to interact with Oconomowoc and interact with our businesses, but I would ask that, you know, we do establish a process to designate certain establishments as not qualified for those hours if we found them to be repeated and on compliance with, you know, current ordinances, so. I mean, that's my opinion on it.
Alderman Rozak.
Just rhetorically to that, Chaz, I guess I am curious, I mean, the, the economic activity at four in the morning will just be people at the bars, right, drinking? I mean, it's not like they're gonna be shopping or anything at 4:00 AM or walking around our city. They're just, they would just be essentially just drinking at one or two of the bars that may stay open.
Well, they're at the convention for a long time. I mean, they don't get out of the convention until, you know, midnight or whatever, so.
Are they there that long?
I mean, it's just like, you know, and I've seen, you know, how certain people interact after, you know, late night meetings. Sometimes you go out and do things, so it could be the same thing, but they don't get out until midnight, so.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm torn on it, to be honest with you, because it's a long.
I'm basing mine on chief. I mean, and partly, I mean, not just on the chief's recommendation, but he's saying that he's not seeing significant, you know, increase in manpower issues that, you know, he doesn't see significant safety violations occurring as a result of it.
So is it 4:00 AM? I mean, in the memo, it says four to six, as far as 6:00 AM. That's what.
Well, that's, that's what the act says, that shall be, shall be between 4:00 AM and 6:00 AM.
So, I mean, you could have people potentially, let's say they come back from the convention, they're staying at the Hilton Garden Inn, coming down and drinking till 6:00 AM while I'm getting up to go to work, and they're still drunk or drinking and driving or something. I mean, I don't know, it's just, I'm, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there, you know, kind of my thoughts. It's a long time to be, to have bars open, even if it's only two or three, I think it's a lot. And I, I don't think it's something that if you told this, a typical citizen around Oconomowoc, hey, we're just for this one, you know, week and a half, we're gonna stay up until 6:00 AM for people to drink? I don't know. They, you know, here's the thing, if you, if you, yeah, four nights, whatever. You can always go drink at your hotel room, you know, you can always go get a six-pack and go back to your hotel room. That's what I do when bars close in cities early on the weekdays.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
I mean, I'd be shocked if they're up till six. They have to get on that bus and go in the morning, all the way back down into Milwaukee again. So I don't know. Part of my question would be in here, in our packet, it said, you know, they're down there till 11 o'clock or midnight, like Chaz said, they're taking buses or coming back out here or whatever. They want to eat and they want to drink. So I think part of my question would be, are these, are these restaurants gonna keep their kitchen open that late, too? I mean, so.
Fair choice.
Yeah.
So we're at a position that you can make no motion? You can make a motion and you can have a vote? That's all up to, up to the eight of you. Alderman Ellis.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Any further questions or comments for staff or Chief Fister? And we're gonna just leave it at the first reading?
We all gonna leave it at the first reading, that is correct.
Okay. Call roll.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Nay.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
No.
Alderman Maroney.
Nay.
Alderman Douglas.
Nay.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Aye.
It's tie vote, Mayor.
Do I have a coin?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so motion passed.
Party on.
No, or don't.
No.
Party off.
Party off.
And to remember that this will then come back on the 18th for a second reading, so it gives you an idea to ask people or get feedback from residents in the city.
That's, that's correct.
All right, on to our next item. Consider Act on Resolution 24-R3203 awarding engineering design services for the wastewater treatment plant facility plan. Mr. Freiber.
I was here about four weeks ago, talked to you about the DNR, said that they would not allow any more major projects at the treatment plant until we did a complete facilities plan, requested that we take some of the, the funds that I had, we had set aside for the secondary clarifier work and turn it into a facilities plan for this year. We went out and requested RFPs. We got five firms that talked to me about it, three that submitted on the RFP. Of the three firms, Applied Technologies had the highest technical, and they also had the lowest cost for the, for the facilities plan. I'm recommending that we go with Applied Technologies for the facilities plan at the wastewater treatment plant.
Questions or comments for Mr. Freiber? Would like to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Aye.
On to new business, consider Act on Resolution 24-R3204 awarding the Lac La Belle Boat Launch Project Construction Management Contract. Mr. Betcher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your packet tonight is a resolution for the Lac La Belle Boat Launch Project Construction Management. At the last meeting, you guys approved that project. This is for the construction management to oversee that project. MSA is the group that did the original design. They were selected through an RFP process, and due to the complexity of this project, we'd like to recommend that we use them for construction management. MSA did submit a proposal for the construction management for the project in the amount of $164,444. This plus the 10% contingency amounts to a total cost of $180,885. This proposal is about 7.2% of the total project, which is appropriate for this type of project. So staff recommends approval of the resolution for this construction management, management project, or construction management.
Questions or comments from council? Mr. Betcher, for Mr. Frye?
I did, my only notice.
Alderman Rozak.
Yeah, I mean, this is the same group that did the original design. I chatted with Mark a little bit before the, the meeting a couple weeks ago about this. And given the complexity of this project and what's all going on with the boat launch, you know, it was, it was thought these guys would be the best bet to keep the project moving forward in a timely and efficient manner. So typically, we like to see the construction management different than design engineer, but I think this is one of those projects where it's very, very unique. It's not your standard, you know, paving project or curb project. It's something very unique and it's generational project. So I, I think it makes sense in this instance, and I'm in favor of it.
Any other questions or comments? Would like to entertain a motion?
Rozak, so moved.
Second.
Any further comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Aye.
We at this point have no additional staff reports. Do we have any comments from the Alderman at this time before we go into closed session? Alderman Shellpepper.
We've got the 80th anniversary of D-Day coming up here in a couple days, so I hope everybody has a chance to think about that because it's certainly, you know, 80 years is a small amount of time, but also a lot of time, and it's good not to forget, especially with all the, you know, terrible actors we have in the world right now, so.
Just now I was watching a news station where the word D, the letter D, doesn't stand for anything.
Oh, it's like a military code name for the hour.
Yeah, I, I thought it meant something, and it doesn't, so.
It's a standard.
Something I learned. Any other comments from Alderman? With no additional comments from the mayor, I'd like to entertain a motion after reading the request to go into closed session. Per Wisconsin state statutes, delivering and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific public business, wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, specifically with regard to the negotiations with the town of Oconomowoc related to boundary and utility service issues. The next closed session is conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is, who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it may be likely to become involved, specifically to discuss the cities threatening litigation involving properties located at 131 and 139 North Main Street. I'd like to entertain, entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Rozak, so moved.
Second, Ellis.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.